But in the interest of time and fairness, it is the board's policy not to respond directly to comments during this period. Staff will follow up as appropriate. First on the list, we have Catherine Deaninger.
Deaninger.
Deaninger, thank you.
Okay, good evening. I'm Catherine Deaninger. My address is 124 Goldberry Lane, Pittsburgh. And I have a question with regards to the Chatham Park small area plans. First of all, I work for a small, women-owned, small environmental consulting firm called Biasnesses. Some of you may know me. Remember me from past work I've done for the town of Pittsburgh. I coordinated the Robinson Creek Watership Council for over 10 years. I helped in the environmental assessment and drafting of the Southwest Shores Report. I worked with the Wildlife Resource Commission and the North Carolina Forestry Service to develop planning tools for the town of Pittsburgh, to develop protections for your natural resources. I also was actively involved in reviewing the elements of the Chatham Park Master Plan. Chatham Park is the largest planned development district in the eastern half of the United States. When the Chatham Park Master Plan was approved by the Pittsburgh Town Board in 2015, it was with the assurance that there would be a small area plan application process. The assurance of the small area plans was an essential part of why the PDD was approved. The intention was that the future town boards of Pittsburgh and the public would have a set process to review and comment prior to approval of small development plans within a normal planning cycle. I am sure Chatham Park Investors has already developed a lot of internal plans for how they hope the PDD will be developed. But the small area plans' application was not set up for Chatham Park's internal planning. It was set up to ensure that there would continue to be a public planning process that would make sure that this unprecedentedly large planned district would meet the changing concerns and needs of the public at the time of development. Reducing what was expected to be at least seven-plus small area plans over a span of decades to just two relatively large area plans in less than one decade does not meet commitments made in the Chatham Master Plan to a continued public planning process. We do not know exactly what development tools and problems the future Pittsburgh community will be facing. So here's the question. Why can the Chatham Park investors not meet the commitment they made in the master plan to develop small area plans for any section that exceeds 15% of the development for that section? If you look at that original map. Is that it? That's great. Okay.
All right, I was not expecting the music either.
One more statement. Please ask Chatham Park to focus on developing a small area plan for the area it expects to develop within this decade. So essentially Phase 2A.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Steve Wolford.
All right, good evening, everybody. I am Steve Wolford of 3355 Woody Store Road. I don't live in Silver City, but that's my post office. I'm out in the county. What initially excited me about Chatham Park was it being described as smarter, greener type of growth. And people felt like there was a partnership where the developers truly wanted to build that kind of better community. More recently, I started hearing about the planning partnership being maybe a little more adversarial. People described backpedaling on some of the greener assurances of stormwater and trees. My understanding was that the original overall development would be broken into small area plans. Where each plan would be looked at carefully and Pittsburgh would have years to ensure the newest, best thing on development could be implemented along the way. Then I was hearing that CPI seemed impatient with that earlier agreement and now wanted everything approved right away in one single gigantic small area plan. I didn't see any indications that it was Pittsburgh wanting that revision. So I'd like to know why CPI is changing things. I only see this change bringing drawbacks. Client science, climate science is constantly advancing, as is technology in general. In the last 10 years, wind and solar went from being unaffordable to now being the cheapest sources of energy. Transportation systems are evolving in response to the needs of today and tomorrow. Flood maps are being updated. Communities around the country are developing better ways to organize life in better harmony with our changing environment and to manage the community costs from development. So I asked what future homeowners would prefer yesterday's outdated models to the smarter new development arriving every month? What town wouldn't want to have as much ongoing oversight as possible and do its ongoing growth? I was also concerned at statements saying we can't plan for something like tropical storm Chantel. Why can't we? Maybe we can't prevent all the damage, but who would want a home where considerations like that were ignored or didn't get all the attention that could have had if people made the effort? And I was also concerned by missing pieces of the draft SAP that I thought the master plan said would be included. If this is going to happen in one big plan, why don't we have one big plan now? So there were questions I had along those lines. What are the plans for the facilities that are going to be in this? Where's the financial impact assessment? Whose taxes are going to pay for services and ongoing maintenance? How can a transportation analysis be done without knowing where the streets are going to be? How do we account for the likely evolution in transportation models over the next 30 years if this plan is finalized now? Sprolling roads bring extensive maintenance expenses. So where's that money going to come from? So if I'm over time here, I guess, I think there's different ways to do this, but I'd still like to see that partnership repaired so that people are working together. And I think, I think the original plan would be a way for Pittsburgh and the developers to get the community they were wanting to have from the beginning. Thanks.
Thank you. Up next, we have Betsy Kraus.
Hello, my name's Betsy Kraus. I live at 680 Liking Trail, Pittsburgh, near Bardrap. I'm here because I care about Chatham Park. It's going to impact me in North Chatham. It's going to affect people in Moncur, Bear Creek, all over the county that will have an impact. It's everybody up to Pittsburgh. I know you care about Chatham Park too, and I thank you for being here and your commitment to this planning board. Much appreciated. I'd like to bring the board's attention to some issues around governance, specifically HOAs and POAs. Much of the governance of major aspects of the Chatham Park development, such as stormwater and open space, is done through POAs and HOAs. These are important aspects of community life and can affect the health, safety, and the welfare of the residents and the business owners who are members of those organizations. For example, the failure of stormwater control measures can cause significant property damage and in extreme situations, injury and death. Open spaces and access to parks and natural areas have been shown to impact personal health and resilience. It is important that folks have ways to influence how these resources are managed. In addition, most homeowners will have HOAs that govern aspects of their own properties. These HOAs also impact community members in many very specific ways. What they can plant in their yards, what kind of basketball court they can have, backboard they can have, what color their house is, and the list goes on. HOAs can be great. They can foster community, relieve folks of yard work and maintenance, and they can, they can make an environment that feels good and runs smoothly. At the same time, homeowners who purchase a home without a full understanding of the HOA covenants, of management processes, and the financial viability of their HOA can have very unhappy experiences. HOAs impact lives, and HOAs without representation give residents no way to have an influence on important aspects of their lives. Involving residents in HOAs after 80% of build-out gives developers control of visual aspects of the community and can impact sales. I understand that, but it also impacts the residents' lives. And folks should have a voice in the HOA when they purchase. So I ask, what is Chatham Park's policy around HOAs in new homeowners? Who writes the HOA bylaws and covenants? And what are the plans for the size of HOAs in different parts of Chatham Park? I ask you to pursue these questions with the developer so that we can have answers before we forge forward on any kind of plan, regardless of.
Thank you.
I have more questions at all.
Thank you. Well, staff will follow up. Ms. Vicky Atkinson?
Good evening. I'm Vicky Atkinson. I live 361 Wild Ginger Ridge. Chapel Hill is my address, 27517. I have two questions that I'm asking that the planning board pass on to staff for answers. One is Chatham Park Investors justification for this large small area plan is that they needed to plan the big picture of roads, sewers, utilities, and ensure the systems work together. Those infrastructure plans are already in process and do not require approval. Chatham Park South has already been approved by NC DOT and arrangements for financing have already been completed. CPI has already made thorough plans about sewer and utilities. In light of the fact that CPI does not need approval of this SAP to plan the big picture of the Southern Village, what is the advantage for the town to approve one giant plan rather than the multiple SAPs? And the second question is that smaller localized area plans are the best option for this 30-year project. Things that are going to change: ground conditions, economic conditions. Global warming is going to bring more rainfall events in the Piedmont. The master plan calls for annual reviews. What is their record so far in relation to stormwater and other violations? The large SAP locks the town into housing numbers that may change over the coming years. Increasing rainfall is expected in the Piedmont and will impact stormwater and add complexity. Once again, how will one large SAP accommodate these concerns? And in particular, what is the advantage to the town of giving Chatham Park Investors control over these factors instead of the town retaining control? Thank you for your attention and for your work to the town and the county. We really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, Candace Hunziker. And I do apologize if I butcher any names. Just yell at me when you get up here.
You did very well.
Yeah, thank you.
It's very impressive because that never ever happens. So I'm Candace Hunziker. I live at 77 Cynthia Lane in Pittsburgh. And honestly, a lot of the questions that I had have been brought up, like Vicky's question on what is the advantage to the town for moving forward with this large small area plan? But I have one that I'm questioning from the last board meeting, and you guys asked some really good questions about this. It really kind of took up a discussion. Chatham Park Investors said that they needed to move forward with this plan so that they could plan and build all the roads. And they said that delaying that approval would make it harder for them to anticipate what the roads that need to go in and the utilities that need to go in. And there was even a discussion, somebody raised, I think you raised the point about could you put more utilities next to the roads or next to the existing pipes? But then they said that this whole plan let them anticipate the roads and the utilities for subdivision development outside of their area. So that seemed to be a little bit of a contradiction to me, so I was hoping you could maybe ask them to clear that contradiction up. And if the road traffic needs change at the development involves, how will future planning boards be able to adapt if this one large SAP locks them into today's assumptions and road requirements, which I know someone else also brought up? I'm also concerned about long-term costs and taxes. Since the cost of maintaining the roads and the utilities become the responsibility of the town after a year, it's likely that those maintenance costs will outpace new revenue from population growth and the tax base. And if that is the case, how will the shortfall be met? And I hope it doesn't increase taxes on existing Pittsburgh residents. And is it possible that we can get an independent fiscal impact study to determine if the new tax base will actually cover the long-term infrastructure and service costs of such a large expansion? And I think we need something like that because I just find it hard to imagine that we will fill those houses and get the tax revenue to cover any upcoming maintenance. And I know there are a lot of questions that are being raised tonight, so I'd ask you to pause on approving this until answers are found. And then how will we find those answers? Will there be a follow-up session on the questions that were raised tonight? Or is it possible for the town to post the questions and then the answers to you on a website so that our questions can be answered? And look at that, I have 22 seconds to spare. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Jess Meehan Hyatt. I have a feeling I butchered that one, right? No? Okay.
Evening, planning board and staff. My name is Jess Meehan Hyatt. I live at 248 Bynum Church Road in Bynum. I reviewed the transportation chapter, Chapter 3 of the South Village Small Area Plan, and I have the following questions and comments from that chapter. In Sections A and B on thoroughfares and roadway network, I just want to point out that there is a lack of definitions of numerous terms. So there's some lack of clarity there, and I wasn't able to track that down with the meaning of some of the roadway terms was. Also, the maps provided by CPI are very difficult to read and interpret because they don't label enough roads and creeks for context. So Figure 3.1 is the town CTP map, and it is clear and comprehensible that the South Village multimodal transportation plan labels very few roads and only one creek, and it makes it difficult to compare to map Figure 3.1 or to Google Maps, and so it's obscure for public review. For example, what is the road indicated by the red line in Figure 3.2? I wasn't able to figure that out. It also says that the Bill Thomas Road, U-Banks Road Extension and the Lorax Lane Extension were relocated to reduce environmental impacts. They looked the same to me on both maps, and so I was wondering how environmental impacts were reduced by this supposed relocation. In Section G on bicycle and pedestrian facilities, I was wondering if Figure 3.5 shows all of the planned bicycle lanes. It didn't show very many, and I was wondering whether experts in bicycle transit and walkability were consulted in the development of this plan because a city isn't actually bikeable or walkable unless all of the streets include multi-use paths. Also, are the neighborhood streets going to be interconnected on a grid pattern or a series of cul-de-sacs? The grid design is bikeable and walkable, but the cul-de-sac design is not. So I'm wondering who consulted with CPI on bicycle and pedestrian facilities? And along with that, has consideration been given to planning bike routes, not just for recreation, but as transportation routes for people to get where they need to go, work, grocery store, school, et cetera? If so, how is that reflected in this plan? And if not, why not? We'll ask this one more question in Section H, Transit Accommodations. How is it determined that there is no present need for transit services? To me, this seems to come back to the design priorities being centered around the car. If cities are designed for cars, people will drive cars. If they're designed for transit and cycling, people will use those methods instead. So how does a design that relies on the same old methods of increasing and widening roads for cars that run on confusing and inefficient curvy patterns demonstrate a forward-thinking commitment to climate and population density issues? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Lenore Yager. Lenore, Lenore Yager.
Thanks. Thank you again for your attention to these matters. I'm going to just continue with Jess Meehan's points because she didn't have enough time to read all of them. Under the section Additional Transportation Issues on Alternative Street Designs on the second page of her handout, there seem to be a lot of open possibilities here. What opportunities will the town and public have to review these alternative designs before they're implemented? Does approval of this small area plan give all of these undescribed alternatives blanket approval? Or does the approval of this plan mean that the details will be ironed out by CPI and town staff? And if the latter, will there be opportunity for public input at that point? Also, how do these designs, do these design ideas contribute to walkability, bikeability, and transit routes? Would they work against these roles, these goals, sorry? And then the section on typical roadway sections and Sections A and B, the narrative is consistent with the graphic. In Section A, a multi-use trail is planned. In Section B, it's shown and described as optional. In Section C, however, the narrative states that bike lanes and a multi-use trail are planned for this section. However, the graphic does not reflect that. All it shows is a five-foot sidewalk and lists an optional multi-use trail. This discrepancy needs to be resolved. In Sections G2 and G3, where will cyclists ride on these streets? It's known that it is not safe for cyclists to ride on sidewalks, and also that it's not safe for cyclists to ride on streets next to parking lanes due to cyclists being struck by opening car doors. And the other question we had is why are any streets in this supposedly forward-thinking development being planned without bike lanes? And the final point that we wanted to make is, that doesn't pertain to transportation, was a question of, you know, any small area plan, is that it makes no mention of affordable housing. In Chapter 8, under Residential Absorption, Table 8.1 shows zero apartments and condos being built until 2034. 2034, excuse me. Presumably, much of the affordable housing would be in the form of apartments. Does this small area plan provide affordable housing to be built in the early phases of development? Thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you. Next, we have Maura Dillon.
Good evening. I'm Maura Dillon, and I live at 326 Mockernet Road in Pittsburgh. I do feel like a lot of my points have been stated already. So I'm going to skip a lot here, and you can look at my handout. I'm going to start. I also went through the plan, and I was focusing on Chapters 1 and 2. And the first two principles, well, I'm going to start with Principle A, promoting a live-work-play lifestyle, is really a beautiful vision, and they articulate that in a nice little paragraph about walking, biking, and driving short distances to work, sending their children to nearby schools, and socializing at shops, recreation centers, libraries, et cetera. And this is a wonderful vision, but it really does depend on the details, right? I mean, to come up with a really rich, functional, multi-use development takes a detailed, thoughtful planning. You can't just plunk things down in the same old way and have it be successful. So I have to say, the small area plan defers many important questions about what facility should exist and where they should go to the future. And it seems like this would require much more incremental and phased planning. Are there plans for public facilities like libraries and community centers and cafes and restaurant districts and activity centers beyond the actual South Village centers? Now, I know there are these activity districts, but. And how many of these sorts of institutions would be appropriate for an eventual population of 65,000 people? Also, what efforts are being made to create jobs with salaries commensurate with the cost of living to live in Chatham Park? What percentage of Chatham Park residents are likely to work inside Chatham Park rather than commuting out of Pittsburgh or Chatham County? Principle B, incorporating biophilic design qualities into all development within Chatham Park. You know, that's beautiful, and it's a wonderful aspirational idea, or it could be greenwashing, plain and simple. And so I think it's important to go to the North Village. How are the new homes and apartment buildings there? Are they really in close proximity of nature the way it's described here in the small area plan? The map that shows possible neighborhoods in the South Village doesn't appear to show much access to nature. It's a little vague about what that means. I think in general, it's very vague. And it's vague in very many aspects. Somebody pointed me to the Moncur Small Area Plan just the other day, and that has some really nice appendices that have very detailed information about things like financial impact analysis and some other long-term visioning and contingencies that I thought could be very useful to have added to this plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Before we have Carol Hewitt, is it possible that we can get more lights? Oh, no. No, it's fine. I feel like I might end up with a headache. Like, it's a weird.
The entrance is more effective in the dark.
There you go.
And I want to tell you, spare me my name.
Well, thank you for the.
Give you three of these.
Thank you.
I'm going to be brief. I am Carol Hewitt. I'm 424 Johnny Brook Road, Pittsburgh. I think what I'm going to talk about, Teresa is going to cover. But I just want to show you this one page from a five-page document that it didn't print. But I'm going to email you it to you unless Teresa already did. And I think some of the people that spoke tonight are probably also going to follow up with emails, so expect to see a lot of this in your email box. But there is a five-page document, was a nine-page, now it's a five-page, and it's called, at the top of here, it's called The Process. It's called Process for the Small Area Plan, right? And this is page 5. And I just want to take you to, and again, maybe Teresa's going to talk about this, but I really want you to know your timing. So once you officially, not tonight, tonight you're going to get Teresa talking to you, but once you officially get a small area plan presentation from Chatham Park, a 60-day clock starts ticking. You have 60 days. And if you don't get a vote and decide how you're going to vote on it and get it to the commissioners, the commissioners then have to act without your, you know, your influence. So this is all so complicated, and there's so many little pieces in here. I want to make sure you knew that one. So let's say your meeting is in September, you got a presentation. Your next meeting is October, and the next meeting is November, but that one happens to be 62 days. You know, you just have to be really thoughtful, and I don't know exactly how that works, but I know the staff will make sure to take care of it for you. So this next little period is so great for you, for us, to really dive into this plan. Hopefully by now, you probably have got hard copies of it. We've had a lot of fun learning about it. There's a lot in there. Um, we've had, we've had a lot of fun learning about it. There's a lot in there. It's pretty, it's, it's amazing. This is probably the biggest small area plan in the world, being considered by a town of four thousand people. You know, it's just, it's pretty, it's a pretty radical thing. So that's your, that's on your paper. Just take a look at that. I do want to tell you that the nine pager, and it's gone now, but I had a copy, and this was in red, but my printer died. I just want to read you one line from this. This is gone. This is cut out. Due to the project area size for small area plans, the applicant is not required to send individual meeting notices to all abutting property owners. Instead, it'll be posted in the town hall, et cetera, et cetera. So this is so big that they're not required to give the respect to the neighbors of even notifying when, when, when that public meeting was held. If, you know, this is, again, this is gone, but it's just interesting. If it's, if something's too big that you can't even tell your neighbors what you're up to, it's too big in a small town like this, in my humble opinion. And I believe there is also talk in this five-page document of a public meeting, and, and that probably happened. Maybe that was like a December meeting. When we get out eight, ten, nine, nine, ten, twelve months, um, it seems like even though it isn't required, there might need to be another public meeting. So that's just a, just a concern, but I wanted to make sure you really were aware of, of the timeframes. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you. All right, that will conclude our public comment. We will move on to old business. Ms. Teresa, you would. Staff update for the Small Area Plan.
Good evening, everyone. Is the new microphone?
Think so, yes.
Thank you. Uh, Teresa Thompson, Assistant Planning Director. Tonight, we're just gonna give you an overview of the timeline. Um, seems when I'm having conversations with people and I use terminology such as master plan versus smaller area plan, there's confusion on what does that all mean? So we're gonna kind of start from the beginning of Chatham Park, go through the different steps of approval, uh, talk about where we are now, and then some options to give you for next steps. Um, feel free to ask any questions. I was not able to write down all the questions asked for. So there are questions asked at the last meeting by the public, this meeting. If you would like staff to respond, just let us know. We can do that written form or bring it back to you again in another meeting. Um, so just let us know, maybe, maybe we can answer a lot of the questions tonight, throughout the presentation or after it as well. All right, so we'll start with the first slide. Um, Chatham Park was rezoned in twenty fifteen, so includes about seven thousand acres. Everything north of sixty-four Business, the North Village, that's about two thousand acres. Everything south, sixty-four Business, uh, East Street is the South Village, and that's about five thousand acres. So the North Village has already been approved um for the Small Area Plan. Back in twenty fifteen, when the rezoning was approved, there was a large doc- document called the Master Plan. That was a lot of the um guiding principles for Chatham Park, which we'll go into a little more detail on that in the next slide. Um, there was also a Small Area Plan Agreement. So there's a chapter in the Master Plan that goes over what a small area plan is and what the requirements are. There needed to be a little more detail for that, so there was an additional agreement approved, and it's been revised twice. So it was approved originally in twenty fifteen. The most recent revision was twenty twenty-three. Um, nothing major from what I saw. There was some uh language that was streamlined regarding uh the review process. Uh, so there was also twelve elements that have been approved throughout the years. I'll go through those in a little more uh detail in a second. And then, as I mentioned, the North Village Small Area Plan was an ori- was originally approved in twenty twenty-one. I was involved in that review and um presenting that to the Town Board and Planning Board. Uh, it was revised in twenty twenty-three uh in April, and then again in August. Um, so that is finalized. Now we're going through the South Village process, and we're not, we have it to be determined for the date of approval for that. So um, when the Small Area Plan is given to you to start reviewing the actual Small Area Plan, which has not happened yet, staff is still working with the applicant on um the final submittal. You will have sixty days to review that. So after sixty days, whether you give a recommendation for approval or not, um, it must be submitted to the Board of Commissioners for the final consideration. So just so you know, that was something that was approved back in twenty fifteen. Um, that's a requirement. Also, before the Board of Commissioners makes a decision, we have to have at least two weeks of public input where we, we receive comments from the public, either through emails or letters. Um, they also have to have a public comment period at that meeting where they plan to make the decision. But the town of Pittsboro, you know, we've accepted public comment periods, obviously, well before then, um, which we will provide what we have received within the packet as well. So you can have an overall um view of all the different public inputs, like letters and emails we've received.
Is that um the final public input, input that you're talking about? Is that after um the Planning Board makes a recommendation?
Yes, that's, that's how it was approved.
Sure, okay.
In the language. So any questions about the overall steps of approval and timeline? Okay. Uh, so as I referenced, there's twelve elements. Thank you. Um, and you can think of the elements as chapters in our U D O. So back in twenty fifteen, um, we didn't have a U D O. We had pretty outdated ordinances, a bunch of freestanding ordinances. Um, the zoning ordinance, I think, hadn't been updated since like the nineties um at that time. So Chatham Park drafted, presented, and got approved twelve different elements. So the first one being definition, general provisions, phasing, open space, tree protection, landscaping, stormwater, parking, signage, lighting, public art, transit, and public facilities. Oh, and there's also the affordable housing as well that's been included. Um, so when staff reviews preliminary plots, site plans, this is what we're looking at. Um, there's additional requirements in the Master Plan. And then anything that's not covered by either the Master Plan or one of these elements converts to U D O. So for example, uh, major subdivisions. When we go through that process of what's required for like preliminary plot approval, what needs to be on that, we, we go by the U D O, and the U D O has an administrative manual where we have a checklist and everything. So Chatham Park has to follow the same rules as anyone else that submits a preliminary plot in the town. Otherwise, their rules are uh different than what the U D O rules are. Does that make sense? Okay. Um, and back to the Master Plan, so there's information on each of these different elements. It goes into more detail in the additional elements that I just went over. Um, and then, like I said, there's a chapter on Small Area Plans. And then there's additional provision language at the end of the Master Plan. Back in twenty fifteen, this was the map that was approved. It was um a land use plan map. Uh, you can see the yellows are pretty much the residential areas. Blue is research and development. Orange is the mixed use and um, or red is the mixed use. And, well, yeah, orange is mixed use for residential, and red is mixed use for non-residential. And there's also activity centers, which are the circles that are purple. So with the North Village Slumery Plan, um, the purpose of the plan is to give more detail, and it can update things that are, like the plans and um maps in uh that have already been approved. So like the Master Plan map, for example, has changed slightly. As you can see, from what was approved in twenty fifteen to what got approved in twenty twenty-three, or originally twenty twenty-one. So, yeah, the Small Area Plan basically is that additional step to the conditional rezoning where you have um some discretion on what the issues that you want to see addressed are. And the Small Area Plan can supersede what was already approved. And then comparison to the South Village. So on left side is twenty fifteen map. Right now is uh what we have is this draft. This is what was on uh what staff put on the website. So we have been working with Chatham Park on additional um uh updates to it, but we wanted to use like what's on the website for everybody to see, so it's consistent. Um, so you can see, again, there's some differences in the twenty fifteen versus the proposed twenty twenty-one. And like I said, north of sixty-four is two thousand acres, south is the five thousand acres.
Um, so as those changes are made and stuff, is there a place that um clearly like particulates the differences? And stuff like, for instance, on the draft, and then when things come um to us, like this is specifically what's changed and line item by line is.
Well, so when we present the plan to you, we will include a staff report. So like what we did on the North Village was, you have what the requirement is per whatever it is, whether it's the Master Plan, a specific element, um, what the Small Area Plan proposes, whether it's this, we'll say if it's the same as the requirement or if it's something different. And then we'll have a staff comment to that, whether, you know, staff agrees that this is um adequate or not.
But any deviations from the current draft and stuff, would that be like pretty salient, what those deviations are, changes are, uh, you know?
Between like the different drafts?
Yep.
Um.
I mean, that's, I've become very familiar with current draft and stuff.
On what's, what's on the website?
Hundred percent, yeah. So. It'd be helpful to like.
Be very different.
What is?
Well, it's just, uh, we do have a redline version
Okay.
um, that we could submit, but I mean, just to go through and explain like what each like sentence or word or something like that has changed.
Maybe meaningfully, if it was a couple of words that were removed or rephrased and stuff, that's one thing. But if there were meaningful changes and stuff with locations or sizing.
See what you're saying.
Be helpful.
So when we present the final draft to you, we'll try to put together a table of what those neat differences are between the first.
That'd be great, though. Thank you.
Okay. So um, per the Master Plan and per the agreement for the Small Area Plan Review Process, what is the purpose of the Small Area Plan? So the Small Area Plan shall reasonably reflect the anticipated needs and services for the development in that area and the methods proposed to provide the same. The Small Area Plan shall be acceptable to the town. It should contain more specific information than what's in the Master Plan. So again, the Master Plan was in twenty fifteen, so to kind of keep everything moving forward, it was, yes, we'll preview today, and we want to see you come back again um with more information. Uh, the intent is also that the Small Area Plan doesn't contain as much information as you would see like on a preliminary plot or a site plan. Um, that's when you have like the engineered drawings and uh it's a lot, it's, it's pretty much locked in at that point. So it's kind of in between those two steps. Um, there are twenty-seven sections in Chatham Park, and Chatham Park can submit one or more at a time. And so staff, uh, once that's submitted, staff has to review that. So for the South Village, that includes sixteen sections um that have been submitted into one submittal. And that is what staff is reviewing. And again, we're gonna go through that in a second um on where we are now with the review process and some potential next steps for that. If, if the um, you know, one small area plan is approved. Um, lastly, like I mentioned before, this is a legislative process, so you, there is discretion involved in that. Um, compared to like a preliminary plot, you know, if you meet all the standards, if they have to be approved, a legislative is more like a conditional rezoning. So you think about um what the, the needs are for that specific area. We want to make sure that those are addressed. Um, and then what are the requirements? So these are, there's three slides that go over what needs to be in a small area plan. So when staff receives the Small Area Plan, we go through this list. If it's in the plan, we check yes. It doesn't mean that staff has approved it or thinks it's adequate, but we have checked that, yes, they do have a section or a specific map for this. So this is more about the existing conditions um for the Small Area Plan. Uh, the next is what the uh details need to include. So detailed descriptions, um, including location and quantity of proposed, proposed uses, the road layouts, bike and ped facilities, um, connections, transit services, water and sewer, stormwater, recreation, open space, public art, public facilities. Public facilities means anything that is gonna be pretty much owned by the town that's open to the public. So that can be streets, um, water sewer, which that would be tri- river, but it's still considered public, schools, fire, police stations, greenways. Um, and then a description of the Southwest Shore Plan recommendations. Any questions on? Um, and then they also have to submit analysis. So that includes a transportation planning analysis, which they have submitted a model. Um, and the town has hired a third party to review. So um, we're still working on receiving their input. Uh, we asked the third party to compare um what the needs are in the future for the town of Pittsboro compared to what the Chatham Park model shows, also compared to our future comprehensive transportation plan map. So it has, we already have approved for the town our specific corridors that go through the town. Um, granted, this plan is uh over ten years old, but um it's what we have to look at for now. So if Chatham Park presents or recommends anything that's different from that, then we're asking the consultants to compare what's in our plans to what the model shows and basically is what uh Chatham Park proposing adequate for that.
Sorry, one more question. Uh, this might be a dumb question and stuff, but I know previously and stuff, town I've seen like, I mean, I have a kid, I have two little kids and stuff, and I look at like school capacity and, and like the rate at which it gets into the red in terms of overcapacity and stuff. Going from, you know, twenty-seven or sixteen um small area plans to one small area plan. Do, do, do studies like that change, you know, is it, if the slope can get really steep or maybe even shallower, but I doubt it would be the latter? Um, do those things get readdressed or reevaluated?
Yeah.
In terms of the potential?
I'm kind of gonna address that.
Yeah, sounds good.
Presentation, but just to, it might help with a specific example, since it's a one. So um, what Chatham Park has presented right now is this five thousand acre area plan. And what we'll go through in a second is what staff's recommendation is, if that is to be approved. Um, with this being a plan that could be a twenty, thirty, forty-year outlook timeline. Um, Chatham County Schools kind of, they look at more of a five-year outlook when they're um scheduling, you know, school construction. So with the requirements that were listed in the Master Plan, staff agrees that that has been included in this Small Area Plan. The level of detail uh needed for a five thousand acre. area is not sufficient for that. So to say today that we know exactly where the schools, all schools need to be and how many.
I was thinking about like the rate at which during, if it's more commercial first and more residential later, that's different than if it was all, you know, residential first and like who's funding those schools, you know, is that existing residents first, future residents?
Right. Well.
Schools as an example.
Yeah. So we we are looking at the schools needing to be built for Chatham Park. There is a propose, there's one school proposed right now. Per the language that was adopt or approved by the Chatham County Schools is that it would be addressed as development occurs and that additional schools might be needed. So going back to what I was saying with the five thousand acre plan, what staff is recommending for that is for it to be a conceptual plan. So we still see the benefit in that, almost like a like a land use plan for Chatham Park. Um, it's kind of like a guiding framework. From a planning perspective, that's really important to see the overall picture of, you know, how the roads are connected and what are the proposed uses. So looking at that uh comprehensively is very helpful, it's very beneficial. Um, staff also thinks that as development occurs with each section or portions of sections, we do need more detail. So going back to that list that I just went through of uh water, sewer, schools, et cetera. We would like to see that level of detail um for smaller areas throughout that five thousand acre development.
We get to do that, though? I mean, this is again, maybe a dumb question. So if it's one small area plan that then is approved, we can expect that level of detail and scrutiny and discretion after the fact?
Right, and and I'll go a little more, but yes.
Okay.
So as I said before, uh, with what gets approved with the small area plan that supersedes the master plan.
Sure.
So if the smaller plan gets approved with requiring an additional step of what staff is recommending to call section design plans or activity center design plans, and it's mutually agreed upon between the town and Chatham Park, then that can be an additional.
Good.
So um going back to this slide, Chatham Park has submitted the model. Um, they've submitted their uh utilities, uh analysis, which Tri River is reviewing, and then a financial impact analysis, which our um finance director has been reviewing.
The consultant, who's that?
The name of the consultant?
Yeah.
KK, do you remember Brian? No, I was asking Brian. I think it's our, okay, I can double check. That was decided through engineering, the engineering department. And Ken is no longer with the town, so I can't, he's not here. Um, we could also ask Ben Schmidecki, he's with the engineering department, and let you know. I can't remember the name of the, who they eventually chose. Yeah, our uh engineering director was the main uh contact for that.
Do you know whether Tri River is using a consultant to help them with their assessment?
I I have not heard that.
Okay.
So I can double check. So going back to what I said, so kind of running through that example um in mind, staff is recommending that the five thousand acre small area plan be approved as a conceptual plan. Um, we include language similar to this on the first page to make it very clear that this document serves as a guide for how development could occur in the South Village. This conceptual plan is not intended to be considered final or the only way development may occur, but presents concepts and guidance that may vary as actual development unfolds. Before a preliminary plat or site plan is approved or its applicable section, titled section design plan or activity center design plan shall be submitted with the required information. And then we're gonna go into detail of what all that is, but it will be very similar to what's already required in a smaller.
Firebrand question. You mentioned that, um, I mean, there's a, the PDD covers the entire seven thousand acres, right? Um, so the U D O wouldn't, wouldn't ever come into effect unless it was outside of Chatham Park technically, right?
Um, only if Chatham Park agreed.
To the.
So like, they have their elements. So if they have an element already approved, Chatham Park has to go by that element. If there's something that is covered in the U D O but not in the element or master plan, then staff does look at that in the U D O. Otherwise, we don't look at the U D O for Chatham Park. We only look at these elements.
Right.
So if anything were to change, it would have to be mutually agreed upon.
That's like, it's again, maybe like a thirty, maybe it's not the right time to ask the question or for it to be answered and stuff, and maybe we'll get to there and stuff. And it was asked by our community members a couple of times, this meeting and last meeting and stuff. Um, what is it like the, the, the real town benefit or what does the staff feel of approving a single small area plan first with um uh, design plans and the activity center design plans and opportunities to um to enhance that or change or have some discretion over a conceptual plan uh over multiple small area plans. Like that's so, I'm still struggling to understand the um, the benefit of for a town.
So uh, staff looks at it as more of like a foundational plan for the South Village. It provides a framework of what could occur, but there was a lot of planning involved. So unless things change over time, like the market changes, for example.
Yeah.
Um, the overall uh design of the South Village probably not changed drastically. Um.
Meaning if it's one or if it's many, it wouldn't change?
I'm just saying as development occurs over the next twenty, thirty plus years, we're, we're gonna be looking back at this uh conceptual small area plan for consistency for when they submit their smaller design plans.
Suppose it may be another way to say it, like um, the benefit of of approving one instead of many is the risk of having um opposing different small area plans or things that conflict
Exactly.
One another over time?
Yes.
And then that's.
Consistency throughout the sections. So if we didn't have this, Chatham Park, they could just say, okay, we'll provide this one section now. We don't know exactly how it connects well with the adjacent sections. Um, they might not propose a park, a public park in this section. So we kind of have to wait, you know, until the next section. Versus right now, we have the whole five thousand acres and we know how much acreage they have to provide towards public parks. So let's look throughout the entire South Village and see what makes sense comprehensively. You know, for public parks, for example, where it makes sense in relationship to school or the roads and residential sections versus research and development sections.
Teresa, the um section design plans, will those go through us or will they just go to staff?
Staff recommends it going to the planning board and the board.
Okay, great.
So yeah, it just, it provides more direction.
I think that's a good way of explaining it, though, and stuff. Um, so thank you for that.
Any other questions about?
Yeah, this looks like a happy ending.
Thank you for asking that, Matt.
Um, so if the smaller plan is approved, staff has a few um recommendations for next steps. One would be for Chatham Park and the town together to provide annual updates to the town. Um, so basically, what, what have they been up to the past year? And the next slide is going into a little more detail. Also, what an annual look ahead is. Um, so what do we have to expect in Chatham Park over the next year? And including the section activity center design plans. Um, another benefit to looking at these uh, smaller plans is we can have conversations as as needed with Chatham Park over time as needs change, as community, community needs change, that is, um, to discuss updating elements or updating town standards and specifications.
Will the um section and activity center design plans kind of follow the original sixteen sections that Village was broken into?
Uh, we're still having conversations with the app care about that.
Okay.
The annual updates, annual look ahead, would that be like, could I filter? Um, I mean, would that come directly from CPI? Would that be filtered through you, um, the planning?
It would probably be presented by the planning director.
And like hosted somewhere? Yeah.
It'd probably be at a town board meeting.
Okay, so, okay, not live.
It would, it would be like a report.
Okay.
I'm sure it'd be, you know, recorded live and all that, but.
Well, I meant like um, or like online, where if someone's unable to get here and stuff, our ability is gonna read this and adjust it and send questions. Okay, great.
And the next slide goes into that with the.
If we move on, so with the section activity centers, you're saying we would update Chatham Park elements and update town standards. But would those, how, I thought I heard you say that there would be discussion about the Chatham Park elements?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but as far as actually implementing that, is that going to be something that the town will require? Or something that has to come from a joint agreement?
I will show you what the languages that got adopted in the general provisions element back in twenty fifteen. And then we can, we can take it, the conversation from there. But I can show you what, what has been approved already for that process.
This is, goes, question, sorry, about P D D versus U D O. It's my understanding the P D D is more restrictive, has more requirements like uh, you know, water um and uh buffer for rivers and lakes and stuff like that. The U D O is town, you know, the rest of the town environment's developed in, I guess, twenty four or something. So, I mean, we're not suggesting that we're gonna um, I guess the P D D as it stands today for the north side, is it all those elements will be there for the south side? We're not going to have to update U D O just to cover the south. And we're just, but that's a benefit of doing this is potentially updating U D O for the whole.
Um, well, the elements for Chatham Park, they can be updated. Um, the U D O is a living document, so we, you know, we update it that as much as we can. And our goal is to give y'all quarterly updates for review. Um, so some of the U D O updates that we continuously do will affect Chatham Park and some won't. Um, but as it is right now, if there's an element like for signage, we look at their element for sign permits. We don't look at the U D O to review a sign.
Unless they have something absent that's not in their element, then we go to the U D O.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
Um, so regarding the look ahead, uh, we, we've discussed what their anticipated co- um, submittals are for the upcoming year, economic development opportunities, um, roadway projects, uh, climate action planning updates, this, pro- proposed public facilities over the next twelve months. Any potential adjacent parcel rezonings that Chatham Park might be um looking at? So as you know, the P D D is that seven thousand acres. Um, Chatham Park has acquired and developed several other projects adjacent to Chatham Park. So um, because it's being developed by Chatham Park, it's also able to be interconnected into Chatham Park. It's just for legal reasons, um, they're zoned differently, so we don't have to open up that twenty fifteen P D D rezoning every time. But Chatham Park does uh have the adjacent properties, meet the elements as needed as well, so it's, you know, more cohesive. And then over the past year, we'd be looking at what was built, including dwelling units, non-residential, rural housing. Any updates to the elements have been made. Um, different tracking sheets. So could, could include tree preservation, um, open space, parks and recs. And um, greenways. If we have to update tra- the transportation model when we're doing like section plan reviews, if that's needed, um, what, what those updates look like, water sewer model updates and sewer capacity management. So these are just uh different bullet points of what can be included, but it says that um, the planning director can ask for anything in addition to that to be included. So it would, you know, be tailored.
This likely be like a January first type of expectation or specific data expectation, and everything that's done up to that point will be included. Okay, awesome.
Yeah, so I'm digging into the proposed design plans. Um, so with each design plan submittal, staff, and this is a draft, by the way, this is not being proposed tonight. Um, we're just updating you on where we are in the review process and getting any initial feedback from y'all on this. So we would look at asking for the tracking sheets. Um, so for every preliminary plat that is submitted, Chatham Park provides us a tracking sheet. And it shows where in that plat are they gonna have either onsite active recreation or open space? Is it gonna be offsite? Are they gonna be paying a fee and lieu? So we're doing it step by step by step right now as town staff, and it, sometimes that can be difficult to keep up with. So what we're looking at is when you're proposing a specific larger area, we wanna know what you're proposing with tracking sheets to look like. So what are you proposing within this area for your active recreation versus open space and what does that look like? And then that's, that makes it easier for staff, specifically in this instance, um, Parks and Rec staff to uh plan for that section. And that way, we're not piecemealing it, you know, preliminary plat to preliminary plat to preliminary plat.
Well, especially like fee and lieu. I mean, um, is that something that we're to expect before the smaller plans are approved? Like, these dragon seats to exist?
No. The, the tracking sheets would be as development occurs. We, that's what we're doing right now. As development occurs, they're keep, Chatham Park keeps up with the tracking sheet and it did, it shows where everything's going. Where's the required active recreation going, open space and fee and lieu, but typically they don't need to pay the fee and lieu.
Or, or even be allowed to have a fee, you know, okay.
That's the option.
Yeah.
So what we're asking in the South Village is to be more proactive and getting what your proposed tracking sheets look like in advance. And of course, they can be updated as preliminary plats are submitted, you know, once, when something's engineered. Um, the park size might, might have to move some of it offsite. But it's easier for staff to plan, you know, let's say five, ten preliminary plats at a time um in advance to getting it more like piecemealed.
Is that what you're thinking? It would be like five to ten preliminary plats included in each of these designs?
We, we're thinking right now that um the section sizes can be uh they, depending on what the needs are, you know, for Chatham Park, because um, that's why Chatham Park proposes, you know, twenty to forty years out. We don't, they don't know exactly what the market's gonna be ten years from now. So we do wanna keep that flexible on what the size of the section is. So yeah, we're working out the specific language for that. On what the size of the section is, so yeah, we're working out the specific language for that. Um, and then uh, activity centers can also be included as their own plan or overlap section plans. Um, we also, it's, it's confusing for, for staff when we're reviewing, um. What we're looking at, like where is a specific standard coming from? So for each section, we want to um, reference where, where are we getting the standard from? Because there's a lot of different places that it can come from in Chatham Park. Also include what the intent of the section plan is, which is to foster early coordination. Provide greater clarity, where, you know, as the smaller plan is more conceptual. And it also helps us streamline preliminary plat and site plan reviews. It's like as I use the tracking sheets, for example. When we receive a preliminary plat, for, you know, uh, the town engineer might be looking at a street typical. And question it, and then we're having conversations about that. It's difficult to, to change after the fact, it's more difficult. Versus if we have a conversation upfront and we get on the same page before the plans are even submitted. Then we know, you know, what's the park land gonna be that's in the plans that are going to be submitted. And that makes it a lot easier for park staff as well. Uh, so right now, we're saying that sections can be, or I should say sixteen sections. Can be submitted up to four sections at a time, and we also want to say, or, or part, any parts of those sections at a time as well. Um, we'd also like the applicant to start having conversations with town staff at least six months prior to submittal of the, of the design plan. Um, depending on the situation, it can be less than that, you know, if it's a smaller section. Um, or something we've already started coordinating on a while ago, we could say three months or, you know. Uh, depending on what's needed. Uh, we will look at the uh, small area plan, the South Village smaller area plan. For consistency and in comparison, that's what we're required to do. Outside of Chatham Park for all of our comprehensive plans. So you know, like when we bring a preliminary plat to y'all, and we do it for Chatham Park as well, but um. At the end of the preliminary plat packet, the staff report, we have, is this plat consistent with? The land use plan, the conference transportation plan, the bike and ped plan, Parks and Rec's master plan. So we're going to look at the small area plan the same way, is it consistent with the small area plan? What that means is it doesn't have to be exactly the same. It can be different, um, there just needs to be a reason why it's different. And so that can be based on a response to change circumstances, emerging community needs or evolving conditions.
And says, um. It said, uh, what's it, may be required to comply with updated town standards, like what's the mechanism of that? And like, is that optional compliance or?
What that means is when you receive the small area plan, um, the South Village smaller area plan. There might be statements in there that. Are applicable today, but let's say five years from now, um, if an element changes or town spec changes. Then they would need to come into compliance with ever, whatever that is. Because the small area plan is not binding.
So if they change their own element, they'll be required to comply with that.
Well, and there's also town specifications, so like street typicals are, are an example. You'll see that in the South Village smaller area plan, there's several different street typicals. Um, proposed.
Yeah.
And staff looked, you know, looked at them, and there's a couple of things that we're still working out, but overall, you know. It, they could look great today, but maybe ten, fifteen years from now, town specs have changed. And we would, we would, um, require a different typical.
That extends, okay.
Across.
Yeah, I'm not.
I know.
Yes, tho- those words may be required really uh, concerns me. Uh, and gets back to the essence of a comment I had previously, which was about the grandfathering. So why is, you know, I hear your explanation. Which to me means that, you know, if we update our town standards and regulations, then at that point going forward. They would have to comply, but you've got, we can hear it says maybe.
But we can approve it as conditional will be required. I mean, that's something that, right, we can make, yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
Do you think it's what we did?
Okay, and as I mentioned before, town staff would review it. Forwarded to the planning board and then the town board for final decision. In reference to the question about updating the elements, so this is the language that's in the general provisions element. Um, Chatham Park shall meet with the Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners periodically. And, you know, as we're proposing it to be annually anyways. To review the additional elements and to discuss possible revisions to improve the elements. Or the way in which they are applied to, to development in Chatham Park. So this is the language that was approved uh, with this element. Um, so in the past, what, what we've done as staff is have a working, um, uh. List of questions about existing elements. And the plan has been to sit down with Chatham Park. Developers and withers, uh, to go over these questions and concerns, um, kind of like in a workshop. And try to get on the same page of, you know, what, what standards should be updated in elements. Um, and then bring that to the uh, planning board and board commissioners.
Those um, published at all? I mean, like what was requir- requested and either denied or negotiated and stuff?
We have an ongoing Word document, a list, I mean, it's not on the website or anything, it's just internal for staff.
Okay, it's faulty.
So that's what the, um, that's what we currently do for updating the elements and, uh. So I think someone asked, like, is it required to update the elements? A- as the way it's written now, no, it's not. There's nothing that says elements have to be updated every year or anything like that. And it has to be mutually agreed upon.
It has to be mutually agreed upon, and so either party can say no, and then they just stay as is.
Yes, sir.
Good.
Yeah, I think there's one more slide. Okay, and this is in the master plan, speaking to town standards. So the way it's worded right now is that whenever a subdivision like preliminary plat or site plan is submitted. Um, Chatham Park uh, must design it and conform to. Whatever's applicable in the town's standards, they have to conform to the town's standards in effect at that time. That proposed development is submitted. So if a preliminary plat submitted ten years from now, then they have to meet the standards ten years from now, not today. Think someone asked about that with the small area plan approval, it doesn't lock them into what's today.
So at this point, no matter what, whatever's come up, whatever's changes, then they have to, they have to go back and make changes. To, to make sure it's meeting what the town says.
Correct. So that's where we are right now with the review, um, we're still working out language in the actual plan itself. Um, so you know, we want to make sure the board, we answer all your questions and you feel comfortable with the review and consideration. So, um, please let us know what you, you know, if you need more information between now and the time we submit it. Feel free to, you know, you can email me or call me individually as well.
So Teresa, thi- this was very helpful. Um, but it's also very overwhelming, there's, there's a lot of information, and I think all of us want to get this right. Cause it's a huge thing that's going to impact the area for decades, centuries maybe. Is it possible for us to have a, once, once we see the actual? Plan that we have it in our hands, I mean, Randy told us we were going to get hard copies and we haven't seen those yet.
That's because it's not ready, and, and like, and once we give it to you, you only have sixty days.
So, so once we get that, can we have a working session where we can go through it and hash out? Stuff and talk about how it is. In context with the history of what's already happened and, and.
We can, I would recommend having a work session prior to. Because you do have the first draft, and I'm assuming your questions will probably be similar now versus when you get the final draft. And as you only have sixty days to review. You know, if, 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 if we intend on bringing you the, and, you know, next month, for example. You only have those, those sixty days, so.
Okay.
It has to be open in the, to the public, and we can't just get to, yes, we'll. Come up with a date and get it posted, and. That's a great idea, Connie.
Be very helpful. If y'all can figure out a date that works hard, but you can always do a special meeting as well, it doesn't have to be the same. Like your meeting time.
Well, and we're not held to just one, I mean, if we get into it, then, yeah.
Start it sooner.
Have a couple. Special meetings just have to be advertised forty-eight hours, so.
We have a copy of this slides as well.
Yes. Slides, um, we. I think that'll be on, actually, we'll have that on the. From the website.
A couple of uh, things to think about questions. So the first one, and it, and it just so happens that I thought these, and then we had some public comment on here as well, the affordable housing, so. You know, as I understand, it's seven point five percent of total housing, right? So I don't know, there's twenty thousand times seven and a half percent, fifteen hundred portable housing units. Uh, concern with the south SAP, we talked about it, providing consistency across all sixteen, eighteen sections, right? So I think as we go through this, we need to be cognizant of how do we fit fifteen hundred, cause I don't think there's any. There is.
That new, uh, where they're just leveled the land up there, isn't that for, for affordable housing?
Yes, sir, there's two affordable housing projects going on right now.
Okay, how many units are moved?
I think the comment is a hundred and six, no, I'm thinking of fire tower.
Okay, pretty good chunk then. We have a bigger chunk to go, and it would, I mean, assuming it all have to be in the south plan. Pretty hard to fit a thousand units in here or there, I just think we should be cognizant of that as a staff and planning board. Um, the other thing that's, I think a lot of the community and I felt, you saw the first map and there's these activity center blue dots. And then there's a discussion, and we, and I think it was brought up where the idea was, would be that. These are going to be somewhat like mosaic, there'd be mixed use housing, there would be an anticipation of. Greenway space, all the things that have been brought up, and I know that's still there, but I think that when you see the new map and it looks like one giant subdivision. With just some generic, you know, i- it, it looks and feels like it's instead of being. Four activity centers, each with mixed use, each with all the benefits put out in the master plan. It looks and feels like it's just one, one giant subdivision, so I think one of the challenges as a board, maybe not as a staff, but as a board is to understand. How that is going to really come to fruition, and about tonight, I think it's a very valid point. If each of those activity centers are to continue to be somewhat like mosaic, or I'll say better. With more mixed use, um, I think it's a desire for a lot of people to see that because of the environmental benefits. And of course, the community building and all the things that go along with that, right?
So going back to what was approved in twenty fifteen, they, Chatham Park has a minimum amount of square footage they have to have. Um, for different uses, so. As they present that, you will see it, you know, in the design plan, activity.
Yeah.
Center, design plan, you'll see how it all works together. Um, but there already are parameters that have been approved for what's the minimum amount needed.
Good, yep.
And then Teresa, for the affordable housing. Uh, I think it did, kind of what you were getting at was with the tracking sheets. That would be part of that, wouldn't it? So if we got, say we got fifty way, fifty percent of the way through Chatham Park and we only had two percent of. All we needed for, we would be able to see that.
Yeah, and it sounds like we're already past two percent. But I mean, it's.
As for an example, yes.
No, it, it, you know, I think we need to think about it.
They also have tracking sheets for impervious surface amounts. So Chatham Park, the whole seven thousand acres is considered a common plan development. So overall, they cannot surpass seventy percent impervious. But certain developments like mosaic, you know, certain uh, lots within that are going to be. More than seventy percent, so we have a tracking sheet that keeps up with the average, so that we make sure they're staying under that seventy percent. So we have lots of tracking sheets.
That's a good thing, we keep up with everything.
Yeah, Chatham, and Chatham Park does a great job keeping up for it, keeping up with it as they submit.
Thank you guys for everything that you're doing, trying to keep all of it straight as well, I know it's a lot, so, we appreciate it.
There, there were lots of good questions out here tonight, and I, I think as part of our uh, planning for this. Extra meeting, if we could get answers to all of those questions, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, we, we were taking notes on the questions, and we have the handouts too, so.
Is that something you mentioned, like if, if, if we wanted answers to those questions, we should email them to you and stuff, but is that? Something you want us to take on, or is that something you guys will do? Does that make sense?
Uh, we just.
Both.
Statistically, I just need enough time to put the answers together.
Okay.
You know, a lot of the questions I can't answer, I'd have to.
Sure.
Refer to different staff. And if you wanted to have a work session where we answer those questions for you. Uh, we would just need to find a time that, you know.
Okay.
Sure, buddy, but I think we could probably pull something together within a couple of weeks or so.
Teresa, I do have a question, and uh, maybe unreasonable, that's. Do you have any conceptual idea of when the plan will be presented in final form to the board here?
Sure.
Good answer.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Teresa, Mr. O.
Thank you, nobody else has anything, we will let Teresa. Sit down and move on to our new business, which is nothing. Um, I think that will probably serve as a planning department update, um, I don't think we had anything here. No Randy. Um, and as far as board comment, I just thank you so much, Teresa, to, for putting that all together. Um, I know I have a, a much better understanding of what we're looking at now, I hope everyone else feels the same.
Very good.
Yeah, and thank you to everyone who came out and spoke. Very greatly appreciate it. Uh, on that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Afrika, go have a second. By Alan Wilson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.